Okay, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting in Independence School District 544 to order. Clerk, do you want to establish your quorum for us, please?
Certainly. Kirby Anderson?
Here.
Natalie Knudsen?
Here.
Melanie Cole?
Present.
Matthew Lemke?
Here.
Missy Hermes? Here. And Stephen Vigasa?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda passes. There are no acknowledgements for today, so we are going to move on to reports. Our Superintendent Drake is going to give us our report today.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Basically, two items, one of which is a little bit lengthier. But our kindergarten enrollment now is up to 167. That was, that information's probably about a week old now. But certainly, we're really happy that our numbers are trending in the right direction. And still optimistic that we can reach that 180 mark that we were targeting. Then, more, at more length, is just a recap of a conference call with the Commissioner of Education last Thursday. Schools were given quite a bit of direction heading into the opening of the fall 2020 school year. First of all, the governor is going to make a decision what our options are on July 27th. So at this point, we have a solid date where a decision will be made. Leading up to that, basically, schools were directed to begin planning for one of three scenarios. One would be a full reopening with face-to-face instruction. Number two would be a hybrid model where you have some face-to-face instruction, but you're also doing distance learning as well. The parameters about, on that are very strict, social distancing. So they do not want kids within six feet of each other. And you're operating basically at 50% of capacity maximum. And then the third option was 100% distance learning model as we finished our last school year off. What was interesting is that they, they really approached it this time with the possibility that we may have much more local decision-making authority and regional authority as well. For example, they used Mankato. And they said, under these three scenarios, you may be in and out of these scenarios multiple times during your school year. So you may start out 100% face-to-face. Maybe two months later, you decide that you need to go 100% distance. And then two months after that, you're doing some form of hybrid. And you may bounce back and forth still during the course of the year. They used Mankato to suggest that if you have multiple schools in your district, you may be operating under a different model from building to building even. And so they looked at it, or the way that it was presented to us. The Fergus Falls Public School District may have a certain degree of discretion in terms of how we're going to instruct our students and what model we're using. There are, there's a 100-page guidance document that's been produced. I'm not, I've not read through that completely yet. But there are some things that we will be required to do, some things that we are recommended to do. And, and that will all be part of the work over this month-plus in, in preparing for those three scenarios and how the district will respond to that. And then when July 27th comes, we'll, we'll have clarity, hopefully, on the direction we're supposed to proceed and go from there. So those were the two items that I wanted to touch on with my report. We do have some work around the various buildings that will be taking place. So with that, I guess, any questions?
I mean, it sounds good, to be able to switch back and forth. I think with the logistics of that.
Pretty significant.
Really ugly.
Yeah.
Everything from busing to parents and daycare and meals and, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of planning. I mean, there's a whole lot of work entailed there for staff and for the schools.
Yeah. And you're, you know, in the course of that, you're potentially also bouncing in and out of providing childcare services and food, food preparation and delivery. All of those components that we had last spring are coming in and out of it, depending on which plan that you're, you're operating. So yes, I was, and I think I probably mentioned this two weeks ago. I was hoping for a more narrow focus. And instead, we have the full, we have the full gamut. Every possibility imaginable, that's what we're charged to plan out, so.
I think some of the feedback that I've heard from some of the teachers who've done the hybrid model was, one of the sticking points, I think, with some of the teachers was that if they're doing the in-class at the same time that they're doing the distance, they're kind of stuck in front of their computer because they have to, if they're using Zoom, for instance. And there's a real lack of interaction then with the, with the students that are in the classroom. And so it's one of those things where it'd be nice to be able to do them both at the same time for time because you don't do the same lecture twice, but it's, but also it causes a lot of problems with, with having that interaction with the kids in the classroom itself, so. Do you want to put me in?
Oh, excuse me. Any other questions for Superintendent Drake? So I guess for the public, there's more information to come as we, and it sounds like.
Well, we will be planning on this. I mean, we're starting today to get this plan together. I mean, other districts are already, like, planned out. We, we need to start, like, now because it is going to be super complicated. And like Kirby said, he made an excellent point. If they're going to be switching back and forth, if that's a possibility, we need to do a lot more planning than, we need to start probably sooner. I mean, obviously today, but I think it's more of an urgent thing that we need to do. That's just my, I guess, my comment on that.
I think M D E had sent a, what did you say, an 80-page?
It's 100 pages.
100-page document to work through, so I think any school district that's going to do a thoroughly job is going to be working significantly through it.
Yeah, and we just received that Thursday morning, so.
I think it's going to be definitely some time to work through it.
But there was more. I mean, yeah, it was 80 or 100 pages, but the, the delivery model portion of it was only a subset of it. I mean, there was a lot of other stuff in there.
Yeah.
So.
So I guess for the general public, more information will be coming.
More information to come.
Thank you, Superintendent Drake. Just real quick, I just want to read a statement I forgot to read at the beginning of the board meeting before we move on to our general consent items, just so that we're in compliance due to the current federal and state emergency declaration, the Minnesota directive to residents to stay safe, and a guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting of the Fergus Falls School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021. So just wanted to make sure I said that because we have Natalie online, so. With that, we will move on to our general consent items. We have the minutes from the June 8, 2020 board meeting personnel, Elaine Jenkey.
Yes, and we have some, a number of hires in our certified teaching area. Chanel Kessler, special ed teacher at IQ Academy. Hannah Herzog, first grade teacher at Adams. Heidi Retzloff, elementary math specialist, and has a .5 FTE. Jenny Carlson, elementary teacher at IQ, and that's also a .5 FTE. Michaela Ben, Benston, work-based learning teacher at IQ Academy. And then Kristi Angus, language arts at ALC, at a .5833 FTE. We also have Ethan Johnson with a request to rescind rights of a .0833 FTE, which is one class per one semester. And, and then returning to this .8333 FTE, which he had been before. Certified teach resignation, teacher resignation, Sarah Sundberg, ABE program manager, teacher, effective 6/30/2020. And then we also have a number of individual contracts that Matt worked with. And thank you, Matt, for going through those with the individuals. Technology support staff, technology systems manager, district-wide mechanical supervisor, payroll manager, technology specialist, HR, HR payroll specialist, HR director, finance director, and director of community education. So I would request that the board approve those items.
Do we have a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Steve. Any discussion?
Elaine, can you explain to me what we did with Ethan Johnson? Because it looks like he rescinded rights and went right back to it, or?
He was a .9166, so he rescinded a .0833, which is one class. He was teaching 11 classes out of 12. And he requested to teach back, go back to 10 classes out of 12. So that .083 went to Kristi Angus. If you notice that her FTE was a, would have been a .5, but she took on that other language arts that Ethan rescinded rights to. Okay. He requests, he was lower, and then just because of the class sizes and things that happened, he agreed to teach more. And now he's just requested to go back to where he was at again. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the general consent items, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, roll call.
Yes.
Thank you.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our old business, we have a revision to our FY '21 financial budget for the Fergus Falls Public Schools due to community education budget revision. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Melanie. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Kirby. Do you want to talk about it, like this, real quick, or?
So outside of just the, everything stays the same. The initial adoption we had back in, I believe it was in April, or in mid-March, I'll be in April. We, I had sat down with Mary Madison and company, and we made some adjustments to revenue and expenditures. And we specifically focused on ABE as well. And that was the significant part of the changes.
And part of that is due because of the funding, because we don't learn about our funding until early recent, correct? We just learned about our funding for ABE, so.
And historically, I know Mark and Mary, they, they need that by the end of April, early May, to really squeeze it tight and get the correct numbers in there, so. So next year, we'll be back on the schedule. In June, we will just do one adopted budget with everything. Now that I'm more aware of that.
And then this year, too, the ABE budget came really late to us, with the 14th or the 15th of June, that we received the information regarding the funding piece.
Yeah.
Which that is rather odd, I think.
Yeah, there were some late changes. That, that came from the state side. The state kind of came in and said, this is what we're, this is what's happening with your state aid. We're going to be making some adjustments due to contact hours. And that normally, I don't think, happens. I guess this is my first time working with the ABE side of it. So if that happened, if that were to happen again in the past, or in the future, whatever, I would know. But I guess more conversation with that going forward.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. Our first item is our 2020 to through 2022 membership with Minnesota Rural Education Association. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Missy. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, we have the 2020, 2021 membership with the Minnesota School Board Association and Policy Service. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Melanie. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirby. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Item number three, we have the 2020, 2021 Health and Safety Executive Summary of Written Plans. And this is an annual report, so do we have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Thank you, Melanie. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Missy. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number four is the acceptance of the 2020, 2021 First Dakota Edemity Workers Compensation Insurance Code in the amount of $48,201. And this is an annual. And I have a motion to accept that.
So moved.
Thank you, Kirby. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Melanie. Any discussion?
Is this the same company we've used?
Virtually renewal. Closest one was, closest second was about $10,000 higher, so. It came in very competitive.
And this has been a reduction from late last year, correct?
Yep.
It's been $1,700.
And it all also is, it is based off of payroll numbers as well. So what happens is there's a reconciliation point. If you add more staff throughout the year or reduce it, you'll see, if you see a reduction, there's a credit. So you receive money back. If there's an increase, you see a slight increase, but it's all in the ballpark.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Item number five is the fiscal year 2022 application for long-term facility maintenance revenue statement of assurance. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Melanie. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Steve. Any discussion or comments on this? Roll call, please.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Item number six is a resolution to establish the dates for the filing affidavits for candidacy. And Kirby Anderson is going to read this resolution for us.
I volunteer, yes, I do. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 544, State of Minnesota, as follows. The period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District Number 544 shall begin on July 28, 2020, and shall close on August 11, 2020. An affidavit of candidacy must be filed in the office of the school district clerk and a $2 filing fee paid prior to 5:00 PM on August 11, 2020. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said filing dates to be published in the official newspaper of the district at least two weeks prior to the first day to file affidavits of candidacy. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said filing dates to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least 10 days prior to the first day to file affidavits of candidacy. The notice of said filing dates shall be in substantially the following form. Notice of filing dates for election to the School Board, Independent School District Number 544, Fergus Falls Public Schools, State of Minnesota. Notice is hereby given. The period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District Number 544 shall begin on July 28, 2020, and shall close at 5:00 PM on August 11, 2020. The general election shall be held on Tuesday, November 3, 2020. At that election, three members will be elected to the School Board for a term expiring January 1, 2025. Ad affidavits of candidacy are available from the School District Clerk, Kennedy Secondary School, 601 Randolph Avenue, Fergus Falls, Minnesota, 56537. The filing fee for this office is $2. A candidate for this office must be an eligible voter, must be 21 years of age or more on assuming office, must have been a resident of the school district from which the candidate seeks election for 30 days prior to the general election, and must have no other affidavit on file or any other office at the same primary or next ensuing general election. The affidavits of candidacy must be filed in the office of the School District Clerk and the filing fee paid prior to 5:00 PM on August 11, 2020. Date, June 22, 2020, by order of the School Board by Melissa Hermes, School District Clerk.
And you want to offer that resolution?
I offer that resolution and recommend its adoption.
Thank you, Kirby. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Missy. Any discussion or comments? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
And Missy Hermes, yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. We have, item number seven is the resolution valuing equitable education for all. And Missy Hermes is going to read that resolution.
I'd like to offer the following resolution and move for its adoption. As the country continues to grapple with the tragic killing of George Floyd, the Fergus Falls School District would like to express our sadness at his death. We also wish to reassure our school community that we believe in the value of an equitable education for all, where every student is successful. Racism has no place in schools committed to every student's emotional, social, and academic success. We continue to work for a safe, supportive, and respectful environment that is free from bullying or harassment. Fergus Falls Public Schools does not discriminate on the basis of color, ethnicity, gender, religion, national origin, ancestry, age, marital status, disability, or gender identity. We commit to increasing our efforts toward equity and social justice as well as deepening our understanding of how inequities and racism affect our students and community. This is a continual work in progress, and we know that we have work to do to ensure equitable treatment of students of color. And to our Black and African-American students and families, you matter. You are seen, and we want you to know that we are listening. To all of our community members, please stand together with us in working toward the equitable education environment that all of our students truly deserve.
Thank you, Missy. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Steve. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Number eight is a resolution on discontinuing and reduction, reducing educational positions and programs, whereas the School Board of Independent School District Number 544 adopted a resolution on January 27, 2020, directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions. And whereas said recommendations have been received and considered by the School Board. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 544 as follows. The following program and positions or portions thereof be discontinued. A, Adult Basic Education Program, 35% reduction. Somebody offer that resolution, move for its adoption.
I'll make that, I'll offer that resolution.
Thank you, Kirby. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Missy. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Item number nine is a resolution proposing to place staff on unrequested leave of absence. And Melanie Cole is going to read that resolution.
Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 544 as follows. That it is proposed that blank, a teacher of said school district be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits effective at the end of the 2019-2020 school year on June 30, 2020, pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 10 and Article 14, Section 2 of the master agreement between the school district and the exclusive representative. That written notice be sent to said teacher regarding the proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits as provided by the law. And said notice shall include a date for a hearing, if requested, and be in substantially the following form. Notice of proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence and notice of hearing date, if requested. Dear Ms., slash, Mr., Blank, you are hereby notified that at the regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District Number 544, held on June 22, 2020, consideration was given to your placement on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits as a teacher of Independent School District Number 544. And a resolution was adopted by a majority vote of the board proposing your placement on unrequested leave of absence effective at the end of the 2019-2020 school year on June 30, 2020, pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 10 and Article 14, Section 2 of the master agreement between the school district and the exclusive representative, which specifically, as follows, quote, or colon, financial limitations. Under the provisions of the law, you are entitled to a hearing before the School Board, provided that you make a request in writing within 14 days after receipt of this notice. If no hearing is requested within such period, it shall be deemed acquiescence by you to the School Board's proposed action. If you desire a hearing, a time, date, and location will be established upon request. Please advise if such a hearing is requested. Sincerely, Melissa Hermes, Clerk, School Board of Independent School District Number 544. That each and all of the foregoing grounds of said notice are within the grounds of unrequested leave placement as set forth in Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 10 and Article 14, Section 2 of the current master agreement between the school district and the exclusive representative, and are hereby adopted as fully as though separately set forth and resolved therein. Number one, Sarah Sundberg. So I will offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
Thank you, Melanie. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Missy. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Senator Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Missy.
Yes.
And item number 10 is the Fergus Falls Public Schools COVID-19 Preparedness Plan. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Missy. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Melanie. Any discussion on that? Or any comments?
So the only thing I had was on the social distancing. Basically, it's just saying that we can do groups of 10 or less only in this situation, unless we go into the, like, the gymnasium or something. So this preparedness plan, I mean, if we go with full instruction during the day, that's not saying we're going to limit each classroom to 10 people, but that.
Correct.